Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray.
Yes.
Trustee Hall.
Trustee Hall has an excused absence.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Rockford.
Trustee Rockford has an excused absence.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
President Clark?
Yes, five members of the village board present. A forum being established will proceed with the order of business as set forth on the agenda. For the record, today is Tuesday, August 21st of 2018. We're at the United, the UCB Community Center, 1:20 on Line Eye Road in Sherman, Illinois. At the time, six o'clock, a regular meeting of the Sherman Village Board of Trustees. That all being said, the agenda was posted 48 hours in advance of the meeting in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, so there's going to be no action items added to the agenda. What I'm going to do first is ask everybody to stand and face the flag. I'm going to ask Mr. Greer and Mr. Nell to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance on your cue.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. Do you remember it? Okay, we need to set the agenda. As I said and as I stated, the agenda has been posted. There can be no action items. Any trustees seeking recognition forward, goes to the chair at this time. Any trustees seeking recognition for discussion purposes only. Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to set the agenda. Is there a motion to that effect? A motion's been made by Trustee Tim, seconded by Trustee Gray. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the guys have it. The agenda is set. Let's take care of a couple housekeeping items here real quick before we get into some of the things listed under the village president's reports. Item number one is the presentation of the July 24th, 2018 regular meeting minutes. Those are presented for approval. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented by the clerk? Seeing none, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Trustee Schultz makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Long. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Four members voting yes and none voting no, the minutes are adopted and will be put on the village website for review. Next item is the presentation of the bills for approval. The Treasurer, Treasurer Stumpf is here in attendance. Bills are presented to the board. Do the board member pack it? Are there any questions regarding the bills? Anything outside the normal course of business that needs to be pointed out, Treasurer?
There are, since we missed our last board meeting or the board meeting's rescheduled tonight, there are several checks. We issued some payments last, or two weeks ago, but we did miss the board meeting. So we had that, those warrants that are on there, and then we have some checks that were issued for the July 27th event that are included. And then there's another list that is for the TIP payment to the Sherman Fire Protection District that we did not issue. We approved that, I believe, at the July 10th meeting. And the check, for whatever reason, was not issued, but we issued that last week as well. And then we have the other warrant list that includes all of this period's warrants.
Okay, any questions? So the village board meeting was canceled. Not really missed, sorry Treasurer. We canceled it due to a life agenda. The TIP dollars were distributed to the Fire Protection District to purchase new extrication equipment. So the equipment that they had on the last mass vehicle accident where we had kind of pile up on the highway, the extrication equipment, the hydraulic lines essentially first were rendered useless and the equipment was old enough that the company doesn't make it anymore. So in the interim, the Fire Protection District was loaning and trying out a new set of extrication equipment. They made a request of the village. We distributed $25,000 in tax increment financing funds in order to support that taxing body and in order to buy that equipment for the protection and safety of all the murdering public, all of the murdering public in and around village Sherman. That all being said, we need a motion to approve the bills for payment. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That is four members voting yes, none voting no, bills for village Sherman will be approved. Okay, let's skip around in the interest of time and our guest. So it brings me great pleasure to be able to do this and what's seemingly becoming almost a every-two-week occurrence because of the outstanding students and athletes in Williamsville School District, Williamsville Sherman School District. There is a number of young individuals I'd like to call forward and recognize this evening. Before I do that, I'm going to read a proclamation which will be presented to the coaches on behalf of the Sherman Village Board of Trustees. So I'm going to step over here real fast. Why don't I have the team come up here and flank me as I read this to the audience? Our Sherman Williamsville AU team. Okay, this is the 2000, part of the 2018 USA ASA of Illinois AU state champions, state champions. Ella Greer, where's Ella? Ella's here. Ellie Smithers, Ellie? Ellie's here. Lucy Nell? Lucy? Paisley Boutry? Paisley? Bailey Worley? Bailey? Mackenzie Wieland? All right, and then there are a few other individuals from Rochester, but they're not joining us this evening, is that correct, coaches? Okay, so let me recognize real fast the head coach, which is Clinton Thompson, he's from Rochester. And then our two very own individuals who can recite the Pledge of Allegiance in their young age. Nick Nell, Bill Greer, and we also have Bob Smithers, he's here. Sherman guy? Sherman Williamsville guy? Jess Boutry? Is Jess here?
No.
No? David, oh, never, David Purves. Purves or Purves?
Purves.
Huh?
Purves.
Purves, okay. He's from Rochester. So we have a proclamation that we want to read aloud, get it into the record for the village of Sherman, and then present to you and the coaches, and then there's a couple other things we're going to do. But I'm going to state this as I stand here. Honoring Cruz-09, that's your team name, huh? All right, honoring Cruz-09 girls softball team as the 2018 USA ASA of Illinois AU state softball champions. Whereas the village of Sherman wants to show its appreciation and admiration for the Cruz-09 for its 2018 ASA, AS, or USA ASA of Illinois AU state championship in softball this summer. And whereas the team of girls from Williamsville, Sherman, and Rochester entered the state championship on July 7th and picked up an initial win over the LSGA Jets. And whereas Cruz-09 beat Spartan Storm and EP Express on the way to the championship game where it came, where it came out on top, and whereas this team was led by head coach Clinton Thompson and assistants David Purves, Nick Nell, Jess Boutry, Bob Smithers, and Bill Greer. And whereas the players deserve tremendous credit for their hard work and sportsmanship while winning it all, Bailey Worley, number 17 from Williamsville, and Mackenzie Wieland, number 13 from Williamsville, Ella Greer, number 77 from Sherman, Ella Smithers, number 15 from Sherman, Lucy Nell, number 3 from Sherman, and Paisley Boutry, number 7 from Sherman, Peyton Purves, number 11 from Rochester, Brooklyn Thompson, number 4 from Rochester, Hammy Tender, number 10 from Rochester, and Molly Eichholz, number 6 from Rochester. Therefore, be it resolved that the village of Sherman honors and congratulates Cruz-09 for its outstanding achievement as state champion in the Illinois AU softball, and be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this proclamation be presented to Coach Thompson and the team as an expression of our esteem and respect. Signed this 21st day of August in the year 2018 by myself, village mayor, and its village clerk. So we're going to present this to your coaches that are here in attendance. If you guys could come forward, please. Who's going to, who's going to accept here? Mr. Nell? Mr. Nell will answer. So on behalf of the village board and all of the citizens of the village of Sherman, we want to say, great job, and we're so very proud of you. But that's not it right yet. We have one other thing. We have some signs that are modeled after highway signs that you see along the thoroughfare in the village of Sherman where over 14,000 cars pass and go down our road at the southern end of Sherman. So a lot of people see those highway signs. But that all being said, we have these made for each and every one of you so that you can keep as a keepsake, so that you can remember the camaraderie and the teamwork that you had at this age and as you move forward and win more state championships. So let me just present that one to you. Oh, let's get a picture real quick. Turn. All right, going to come over here real quick, next one. Here we go. All right, next one. Got it? Next one. Show your teeth. And the last. All right, so let's get one group photo here real quick if we can, coaches, team. You throw the flags here. What's that? Oh, coaches, I'm sorry, here. All right, let's get a group photo real quick. And then we have signs for the other, the other little. All right, so let's, let's put our hands together and say, "Congratulations." Stick around because we got another, another individual to honor, so, that I'd like you all to witness. You've got to sit down. Dominic Menendez, come on over here. I've known Dominic my entire life, his entire, not my entire life, your entire life. So Dominic is basically a marksman, sharpshooter, does not get any better than Dominic Menendez. He is, what I can say, literally perfect. So that being said, let me read this and then I'll tell you what I'm talking about a little bit more. So this is a proclamation from the village of Sherman, entire town, board of trustees, and myself. Honoring Dominic Menendez for earning national championship in JV trap shooting. Whereas the village of Sherman wants to show its appreciation and admiration for Dominic Menendez for his national championship this summer in junior varsity trap shooting. And whereas Dominic has honed his craft of expert marksmanship, marksmanship by spending many hours practicing his shooting. And whereas Dominic's friends and family, as he headed to Ohio in July to compete in the Scholastic Shooting Sports Foundation STP National Tournament. And whereas Dominic stepped up to the challenge of the big moments and performed his best on the national stage. And whereas Dominic outshot the field with a perfect score of 200 out of 200. That's amazing. To win his junior varsity national championship in singles trap shooting, representing the Menard County Sportsman's Club and beating competitors from Illinois, Montana, Pennsylvania, and Kentucky. Therefore, be it resolved that the village of Sherman honors and congratulates Dominic Menendez for his outstanding achievement as a national champion in trap shooting. Be it further resolved that a suitable copy of this proclamation be presented to Dominic and his family as an expression of our esteem and respect, and that a highway sign has been requested to be placed at the entry of the village of Sherman. Signed this 24th day of July in the year 2018. I'm going to give you a highway sign as well, and that's what we're trying to get on the entrances to village Sherman with all of the other recognitions. So I think we're going to have to start putting up more poles in town because our students and athletes are second to none, so. Got it, Mom? All right, buddy, very good job. This guy's perfect. He's perfect in more ways than just shooting. I've known him for a very long time. I know his parents super well. They've raised him right. I've seen him grow up to be this young man and just keep doing what you're doing, you're on the path to prosperity. See you, buddy. Okay, so the individuals that I recognized, if you would like to leave the meeting, we will not be, our feelings will not be hurt. If you would like to stick around, you're more than welcome. But we do know that people, you know, want to get to the rest of their evenings, and especially with it being a school night. That being said, you're more than welcome to stay. It should be a fairly quick meeting. But if you would like to retire for the rest of the evening, we understand. I'll stand in these for us. Congratulations, girls. Proud of you. Nice job. You're welcome. Good job. Very good job. Big chance. You're welcome. There was a couple more noisy moments. Okay, so let's skip back on the agenda. Let's go to the Treasurer's report, Treasurer's bundle. That has been presented to the board and your board member packets. We'll all have the time to review it, though that all being said, I don't know if we needed to go through it at this point. Any questions regarding the Treasurer's reports? So let's have a motion to approve the Treasurer's reports. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
That is four members voting yes, none voting no, the Treasurer's report is approved. It will be added to the list of items available for inspection and for. The village engineer had a conflict this evening, so he is not here to give the reports. There are a couple items underneath the president's report from which we'll review, from which he would have also been stating some background on. Legal report?
Legal report.
Legal report.
Yes.
The village administrator and economic development ordinances.
Just a legal report.
All right, that brings us to the president's reports. Let me, before we get going, I want to make a couple of announcements here regarding activities and events that are happening within the village of Sherman. September 7th and 8th, 2018, is going to be the Fall 2018 Villagewide Garage Sale. So there had been some requests for a second garage sale. We said that we would do another Villagewide Garage Sale, so we posted that, and that is the dates that were selected for the Villagewide Garage Sale. September 15th is an event at the Village Park Amphitheater, '84, a tribute to Van Halen. That concert is slated for September 15th, should be a very good time. September 16th is the Route 66 Cruisers Car Show at Village Park. The very next day, there is a car show at Village Park. Fairlane Diner, I believe, is doing concessions. September 22nd. We doing that? We are? Want to try it again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we're going to take another shot at the Parents Night Out, movie at Amphitheater, September 22nd. September 29th, continue to say this, I can't wait to see this show, this concert. Country Night Out at Village Park. Kelsey Hickman is going to come back from Nashville and play at our Village Park Amphitheater. She's the headliner. She's a Sherman, Sherman constituent, or born and raised Sherman. Long's next door neighbor. He's seen her grow up. Long Meyer Band is going to be the opening act. I hear that they are very good as well. Okay, that moves me to ordinance and regulations. Regulation and application for small wireless facilities. Let me turn this over to the village administrator for, can you give a quick one-on-one?
Basically, you can go in this for the.
Go ahead. The state of Illinois adopted a piece of legislation that allowed for small cell operations to place their mobile units on public property such as poles and things with an easement. It's an, it's an effort to increase the amount of, I guess, I'm not very techie, so the amount of power for purposes of cell use. It's, so as an example, if you're an AT&amp;T user and you live in the village of Sherman, this, if AT&amp;T puts one of these boost systems on the pole, which this ordinance would allow based on state law, then it would boost that power, which means you actually would lose as much as you would now under AT&amp;T. For those people who have AT&amp;T service, you'll realize that there are some dead spots within Sherman. It happens in every village, every city, but there are two. That's an example of what this ordinance would allow. Because, and if the village has to adopt something by this means in order to benefit from fees being charged, permit fees, for those companies to actually use our easements, very similar to what happens when Amarin or Cascom or Bales Ferry's wires under the ground. In our easement, they pay us a fee, a franchise fee is what we call that, in order to do that, just like any company would. It's basically, if you're going to use public property, then you have to pay the public back that portion of what you're using, and that one's based on a percentage of sales. This one's not, this is based on one-time fee. Legal council has put this together. I think it was adopted primarily from IML as well, our parent association, and they will recommend the approval from the board.
Any discussion? It's very simple. But if there are any questions.
Do we have any of these small franchises that I'm looking at utilized in the service? We haven't had any contacts at all this time. It's fairly new.
Any further discussion or questions? Okay, so the Chair would entertain a motion to adopt an ordinance providing for the regulation of and application for small wireless facilities. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Tim makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Long. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
Four members voting yes, none voting no, the ordinance is adopted. It will be signed by the village president. The next is an ordinance for the improvement of a road section on Sebring Road. So there is a section of road on Sebring Road. We tabled improving this about one or two meetings ago, I believe it was two meetings ago, because we needed to get some additional information due to a question I believe that Trustee Schultz had. That being said, the engineer has worked on that question, has come up with a plan, and a vendor has been selected to perform the work. Dunn is going to, is this, yeah, I'm just going to read, this is the engineer. Dunn will do in-place pulverizing, grating, and compacting with additional CA6 for a price of $19,829.90. Williams Township, an intergovernmental agreement, is going to apply an oil and ship surface which, with HFE 150 emulsified oil and CA15 ships for a price of $5,750. That work, as I stated, will be done under an intergovernmental agreement. Williams Township is on notice to place this work under a schedule at the tonight's meeting, approving the work. So, that being said, are there any questions regarding this? So we're going to need approval to perform this work. I think you know that that road is in need for some attention. It does not serve a large portion of the population, but it is in bad shape. It actually doesn't even, at the end of it, is where those boundaries stop. But it does serve the, we're shocked, it does serve our Public Works individuals for going down there, and then the other houses, the forehouses that are down there, they travel to and from their house, their farms down there. So we need a motion to approve the $19,829.90 from Dunn. Let's say not to exceed $19,900. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Schultz makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Gray. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes as well. That makes five members of the village board voting to approve that road, having received a constitutional majority. That measure is declared passed. That brings us to the intergovernmental agreement work with Williams Township. We work hand-in-hand with them, so there are some, like I said, various different materials that have to be purchased. HFE 150 emulsified oil, the CA15 ships for a price of $5,750. So let's get a motion not to exceed $5,800, $5,800. Purchase that stuff and enter into the intergovernmental agreement with Williams Township. There are motions to that effect. Public Works trustee makes a motion, Trustee Long. Is there a second? Seconded by Trustee Tim. Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
And I will vote yes, since that has received a majority vote. That's five members voting yes, none voting no, has received a constitutional majority and it will be declared passed, and we will enter into that work with Williams Township. What about this? So there's a resolution that sits before us. Anne, there's Anne. Anne, is it?
Hacker.
Hacker, okay. Anne Hacker is here to speak about this resolution. It's a motion, we're gonna need a motion ultimately to approve a resolution to support the designation of Route 66 as a national historic trail. Anne, if I could please, if I could ask you to please come forward and.
Sure.
Brief us on what the resolution says and the reason that it's being requested of the Village Board.
Yeah, good evening, and I thank the Village Board for considering this request of ours. I represent the Illinois Route 66 Civic Byway Heritage Project, and we are in the process of asking Congress to designate Route 66 a national historic road. What this will do is move us from the heritage project that we are, which is sunsetting in November this year, and make us a permanent partner with the National Park Service Heritage Trails Program, and give us significant funding for promotion, interpretation, and preservation of the, of the historic and commercial assets along, along the, along the national historic Route 66. The National Trust for Historic Preservation has also designated Route 66 as a national treasure, and they are helping the not-for-profit Road Ahead body in seeking this congressional designation. With the help of Congressman Rodney Davis, the, he was the main sponsor of HR 801 in the House of Representatives, it passed a couple months ago unanimously. At this point, we are looking for a sponsor for, for the bill to carry it through the United States, and we expect to have that accomplished very shortly, and everything going smoothly. What I'm here for tonight, briefly, is to ask for your support in this endeavor through the passage of a resolution. We will take that resolution and pass it through the National Park Service and the National Trust for Historic Preservation, onto our membership in Congress to let them know that many communities along the route, from Chicago to the Mississippi River, have broad support for the designation of this historic trail.
Can you name some, some of the communities around us that would have already adopted this resolution?
At this point, um, at this point, Saginaw County has, we got a camp on the south side that has, Will County and Julian are deciding that as well tonight. And we've asked it this in the summer, so, I think about eight communities during that, along there, along the route, have as well, Bloomington is supportive, and some, big and small, Saginaw, I mentioned Saginaw.
Trustees, any questions of Ms. Hacker?
Please.
Well, I think it's a good resolution to adopt and support, I think the Board would probably feel the same way, is that correct? To get consensus? So that being said, is there a motion to adopt the resolution? What's the technical? Motion in support of the designation of Route 66 as a national historic trail. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Gray makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Long. Clerk, please call the roll?
Trustee Gray?
Yes.
Trustee Long?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Tim?
Yes.
I'll go ahead and vote yes as well, so that's five members voting yes, none voting no, resolution is adopted.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Keep up the good work in.
Yeah, Anne, and I, as well, I've got the board here, I will say that the, the Civic Byway program does look forward to working with the Village of Sherman in the future and exploring ways that we can promote your Route 66 assets internationally. And I hear you, with the car show coming up again, I didn't know about that. But I mean, I think there are ways that we can mutually benefit each other, and that's something that we could give international publicity to in the future, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you, yeah.
Well, we hear from time to time from our business owners of individuals traveling internationally.
Oh my gosh, yeah.
Yeah, from Sherman.
It's, it's, we're in, we're in six figures a year for travelers on Route 66 in Illinois, and one of the jobs of the Illinois Civic Byway is to slow them down and get as much money out of their pockets before they reach the Mississippi River.
Wrong for that, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes the President's report. So that moves us to committee and department reports, of which there are none, anybody think of anything, trustees? Nothing? Okay, so the Sherman Police Department Chief, Banger, anything to report?
Really, I just wanted to comment that we had the first day of school, and, you know, we always want to train a new group of parents, but it went very well, very organized this morning with the help of the school staff, and all went well.
Very good. I did get a good report from Principal Edison, saying that he met with yourself and the Fire Chief to discuss school safety measures, and the meeting went well, so, I'm happy with that. Sherman Emergency Management Agency, the director of that is on his way to Switzerland, I believe, so we're not gonna get a report from him this evening. Sherman Public Works Director, he is not here this evening, because it is the lights report regarding Public Works, but the right-hand of the Public Works Director is here, and let's see if he has anything to.
Probably good, keeping up with the grass.
All right, new business, there is no new business before the Board. Old business, there's no old business before the Board. There are no civic organizations seeking recognition. I did have Ms. Hacker listed under our civic organization, but we did that under the President's report in conjunction with the resolution, so that's taken care of. Public comment, I do have a sign-in sheet, I have two individuals who have signed in to speak. I will call them forward to address the Board. Board public comment period affords individuals, any individual? The floor for three minutes to address the Board on various different matters that they would like to let the Board of Trustees know about. So, I am going to set the timer at three minutes. Mr. Josh Carter, if you could please come forward, I will start the clock when you start talking.
All right, good evening. Guys, I'm up here tonight, I think you tired me after talking a bit. We did receive a letter from the State Fire Marshal, happened to do with our fireworks, and I kinda wanted to talk to you about it. In 2017, we had the same Fourth of July party, same fireworks, everything like that. When that came about, I went to Mr. Swinford, who's no longer here, Chief Banger, sorry, Chief Banger and Chief Masterham at the Fire Department, asking what I needed to do to have fireworks. Well, from the Villas, I got told I didn't need a permit. We even went to county, and we talked to them down in the county, and they also told us, since we were not doing professional grade fireworks, that these were all just consumer fireworks, that we didn't need a permit. What I did do is through Fire Chief Todd Masterham, I did take a fireworks safety course. It was the only thing that I knew that may have to be done. I also, well, stay in line here, this was in 2017. We had our party, we had our fireworks, no problems, never had an issue. This year, I did not take the time to run around, because I'm not aware of any changes that may have happened over the last year. I did take the test again through Todd Masterham, Chief Masterham, and just getting this letter was kinda out of the dark of, I know I wasn't there when the police officer showed up down there, because I'm pretty sure they did, I was actually out setting the fireworks off, because I took the test, I was the safety one on the scene, and that was what my job was supposed to be. Now this year, with this issue with the state police, I've also already been in contact with the State Fire Marshal and told him the same thing I'm telling you, and he wanted a copy of my certificates, so I did email those and put them in there. I apologize if something changed that I didn't know about, and if I knew there was needed a permit, I would've been more than happy to come up and ask for one. It's really all I got up here. Oh, other thing that I was gonna add on is, we were getting geared up for Halloween this year. We did not get a chance to install our sprinkler system in our halls of terrace, so they will not be in operation this year. Everything is closed up and boarded up, and they're just our storage shelters right there right now. And that is all I got. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time. Okay, the next individual who has signed in to address the Board is Mrs. Sandra Walden.
I just wanted to make you all aware of the fact that the public hearing from the Village Zoning Committee, which took place on May 30th, 2017, the minutes of that meeting have still not been approved, and that's a violation of Open Meetings Act 5 ILCS 122.6. I just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Let me just go on the heels of what Mrs. Walden just said, that is not correct. That is not correct.
That's what the Attorney General said.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
Absolutely not what the Attorney General said. You can pull up the report, letter from the Attorney General.
Yes, she said that she wanted you to review your.
Your time has expired. So, what happens if you do review the statutes is that the zoning Board of Appeals has to meet again in order to approve those minutes. They have not met since then, have they? No. So, no board minutes can be approved until the zoning Board of Appeals meets again. That's how it works. When they meet, they will approve their minutes from the previous meeting. There has been no zoning board hearings since then. So, do not come up here and factually state things that are incorrect, especially in front of a board.
Read the public act.
People, I, I know it, okay? And I think you read it too, so maybe you should read it.
It says within 30 days after the meeting.
That is subsequent to when the, that's a new act that was passed, the legislature passed that since then, correct?
No.
Yes, it did. Thank you very much. So, moving along. Well, we get to go into executive session now. If there's no further business before this, or, what we're going to do, and because the public comment period is now expired, no other individuals have signed in to speak, the Village Board is going to absolve itself into executive session under 5 ILCS 120/2 C11, and also Section 5 of the Open Meeting Act. So, we need to go into executive session to discuss some matters before the Village. Is there a motion to that effect? Trustee Long makes a motion, seconded by Trustee Tim. All the favors signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, Village Board is in executive session, will stand at ease for all persons not entitled to the chamber, will leave the chamber. When the Village Board leaves executive session, we will be dismissed. So you can rest assured that we are not gonna make a motion other than to adjourn ourselves.
Thank you.